Welcome to the Central Texas College District Board of Trustees Meeting for January. Actually, it was for January, but we had a three, so we'll do it today instead. But today, the invitation we led by trustee Towers to pledge allegiance to trustee D B, and I'll leave the Texas flag.
Let me invite you to join with me as I pray, and if you have a choice of how you pray or how you meditate, do so. Father, thank you for, for the reality of life, and thank you for the gift that, that I have discovered you call prayer. Times, Father, when I come to you asking for something, being selfish. And sometimes I come to you thanking you for who you are and what you do. Sometimes I come to you on behalf of other people, just lifting them up to you. So I'm grateful that there is a resource outside of myself, and so I come to one of those today. Thank you for this moment, for who we are and what we're here for, for those that we serve, those that we appreciate, and especially for the moment we've just had to be thankful for some folks that just put their hand to the task. In a sense, saved this institution from a crisis. Help us to continue to not take them for granted, but to appreciate them, I pray in Christ's name. Amen.
Please join me in honoring the flag. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please follow me in honoring the Texas flag.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
We have a forum present today, and this meeting is being recorded. Members of the president may access this meeting through the Central Texas College website. Item two is considered approval of the minutes of regular meeting of the Board of Trustees held on December thirteenth, twenty twenty-two. Copy has been divided, you and your read ahead package.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded to approve the minutes for December the thirteenth, twenty twenty-two. Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Now we have an opportunity for members of the public to suggest the addition of topics for discussion or to address topics of interest with a presentation limit of three minutes. Is there anyone president like to address the board? Anyone president like to address the board? Seeing none, we'll move on to the chancellor's report.
Thank you, sir. I guess we have pictures, so we got the pictures going. Okay. C C M E conference, this was the presentation of past presidents. One of the things that the C C M E board had asked was why don't the past presidents ever attend C C M E once they're, they're finished with their term? And I said, well, most of them either retire or, or move on to do other things, and, and we really don't do anything for them. So we came up with the idea of a pin. They were pinned, and they were given life membership to C C M E. So I was getting my pin, and I have life membership with C C M E. I joined C C M E in nineteen seventy-six, and, and I was on the board for probably twenty years after that, but, so been a long time with them. That's just a picture. Okay. Next, employee service awards. Who wants to talk about that? Me? Okay. I can't really see everybody. John L's in the middle. I think all of you were at those awards. She was for fifty years with her, with Central Texas College, and I can't tell who the other ones are. Anybody recognize them? I can't.
Employees of the year.
They were employees of the year, yeah. I, I don't, can't remember the names. Okay. Some more. There's Diana Castillo. She got the chancellor's award.
And the Chef Lupita.
Yeah, Chef Lupita. On the right, yeah. They got the Department of the Year Award. Lighting of the Bell Tower. Is Valerie here? Come on, Valerie.
Good afternoon. Lighting of the Bell Tower. We had a fabulous evening that was held December the sixteenth here on campus, and we approximately had three hundred guests that came out to look at all the displays, and we sold all the displays that we had. I think we made a profit of about twenty thousand dollars for that event, and we had the Candle Concert that also took place at the Planetarium, and it was spectacular as far as the entertainer. He did a phenomenal job. We had a really good time. Hot cocoa, cookies, the choir sang, and the band performed. So it was a spectacular night.
Did we have enough cocoa?
We did not. We ran out. So we had enough for two hundred guests as well as cookies, and that was all donated by Starbucks on Clear Creek, and then Cookie, Cookie Crumble donated all of the cookies. So next year, we plan on having two or three cookie companies that are going to donate cookies and probably double amount of hot cocoa.
Next year, could you have it a little bit later in the year when it's not so cold?
Yeah, we can. Christmas in July. It sounds like a great plan. But we are going to host it on December first for twenty twenty-three.
That was my question. That's awesome. My, my anniversary.
Yeah. So you can come out and celebrate.
You got a tour of the campus, I understand.
Yeah, I got a tour of the campus. I was really impressed with all the in-house homemade displays that were all over the campus. We did that. We saved a lot of money by doing that, and that's really good. We could outsource it all, but.
Our talent here, yes, our employees did that.
And they were really proud that they actually made those, and they were like, we're making more.
Yes.
So it's going to even be.
They've already started. We've already started on the planning for next year. We're going to have a tree farm, and it's going to incorporate K I S D as well, C C I S D, as far as all the elementary schools, and have them come out and decorate their trees, and all of the funds that we raise from the trees are going to go toward college for kids. So that's what the program that we're going to scholarship, that, that money too. So we're real excited about that as well. So it's just going to grow year after year.
How many trees have you purchased?
We purchased forty-five trees.
And more to come.
And we purchased them on discount for two dollars and thirty-two cents per tree. So.
I just want to say, it was exactly what I've come to expect from you.
Well, thank you.
It was a class act in that it was extremely well organized. When someone finished, and you even had the chancellor by the, you know, like, leading him on and off, and I was just really. Just really, really impressed with it, and having gone, attended, and I didn't like the cold weather either, but we were there. But having attended that one, I wouldn't want to miss any of the future ones.
Oh, thank you. Yes.
That was great. Very well organized. Very well.
Well, we still got the fashion show coming, so we're not finished yet.
We've got a lot of great things coming from the foundation, so we're real excited about all of them. But thank you. Any questions? No? Okay. Thanks so much.
Next, Zap Awards. Say. Dean Stark.
Yes. Hello, everybody. Zap Awards, we, this is a, an award that we give every month to honor student success work from our faculty, staff, and students, and it is nominations that we take from peers and colleagues of faculty, staff, and departments, and teams. And then at the end of the year, at Colley's lovely event, at the employee, we get to, we name the Zap of the Year Awards, and that's what we have up here. The Student Success Advisory Team selects the winner based on all of the nominees that we got for the month with help from Human Resources. And so on the, the, the first one over here, this is Eagles on Call, and they got our staff, our team award. Chef Lupita, not only was she Faculty of the Year, but she was also Zap of the Year for her student success work, and we don't have up here Norma Cruz from admissions who was honored as our staff for all of her work for student success. So that's, that's the Zap Award. I think the next one is mine too, so I'm gonna, yes. We, just to finish, Welcome Week. Welcome Week is the first two weeks of the semester, and a ton of things happened. I think I have said before that behind graduation, I think when we, when we welcome new students to campus is the most exciting time of the year. I sound like a Disney commercial, but I love it. But this was our talent show, happened here in Anderson. Our theme this year was space, outer space, came up with, a lot of the students came up with it, and such a great theme. They loved it. We had virtual events, and we had in-person events, and this happened to be an in-person in Anderson. And I think the next one is mine too. It's just another picture. Yeah, this is the Welcome Bash, and I think you guys have all heard about the Welcome Bash. It happens the Thursday, the second week of classes. We invite all of our faculty and staff and departments and outside community resources things to help students get acclimated to campus. We have music, we have games, we have food, and it's just a fun time. We had about two hundred and fifty faculty and staff attend the event. We are about to start planning in two weeks. We'll start planning the next one for the fall, so if any of you would love to join the committee, I'd love to have you. Anyway, questions? Okay. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dean Stark. That's it, sir. No more pictures.
Thank you, chancellor. Item five on our agenda is discuss the set of approval of the November twenty twenty-two and December twenty twenty-two interfinancial statements and investment reports. Mr. Liberty.
Yes, sir. You know, before we talk about the heavy duty stuff here, I was thinking about how long you've been a member of C C M E, Jim, and everybody in here has known me with a beard. I think I started shaving that year.
Probably.
Just barely started. I was just, you know. Okay, so you have, you have the November and December statements. I, I, I'm not going to discuss the November at this point unless anybody has questions, but we can roll right into the December statements and the. General Weaver and I talked about them just for a second as the meeting started. As you can see, we are, we are down a little from this year compared to last year, about a half a million dollars from where we were last year through December. But I will remind everyone, as part of this year's budget, we did include in the budget a retention incentive that we paid to all of our employees that were on staff from the previous year, and we made that first payment in September. We'll make another one in May, and that payment was a little over a million dollars. So if you were to take that out, you would see that we would be very comparable with where we were last year. So this is not unexpected because it was something that we put into the budget, as you remember, because we, as it showed earlier, you know, we've got a great staff, and we were figuring out how we could reward them any way we could, and the way, the best way to do it for the college was that retention incentive, and that's why those folks come out here and work the day before Christmas and the day after Christmas and, and keep us, keep us running, sir. So that's, that's the, the only major change from last year to this year. One thing I want to point out, and I don't want to steal John L's thunder, and she's not here at this meeting, so she won't get mad at me, but I know one of the items that you had wanted to talk about was, and I think you brought it up, Bill, the enrollments. And, and just looking at the numbers a little bit, you know, if you look at the tuition numbers on the second page, they're, they're almost identical to last year. But there's, there's, there's a difference in there. The enrollments for, for the Texas campuses were down a little over one percent, but if you remember, we approved a five percent tuition increase. So that offsets quite a bit of that number. The number that's shocking to me, but it, but once again, it's not because I know what we've been doing, Continental International is down thirty-four percent from this year to last year. But I know we've already had several meetings where we've had discussions about the sites that were closing and the sites that are probably going to have a look at being closed again in the future to include our Europe campus because the enrollments just aren't there any longer that those outlining the location. So that was all I had to share, and I can answer any questions anyone may have.
Any questions? And I'll take a motion.
I move to approve both November and December.
Motion made and seconded to approve the interfinancial statements for November and December of twenty twenty-two. Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. The next item, number six, is discuss the set of approval to purchase the three Vulcanair V one point zeros from Amerovia Incorporated at a cost of three hundred eighty-nine thousand dollars each for a total purchase cost one million one hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars. Mr. Molina.
Okay, so good afternoon, everyone. So I'm just here to request the approval for those Vulcanair aircraft from Amerovia at a full cost of one million one hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars.
Just move.
Second. Motion been made and seconded. Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, sir, and be sure to hire the maintenance contract to go with that.
We got rentals out there.
Yeah, I know, but he's getting along with the two. Item number seven is discuss the set of approval of the board document number four four zero order of election. Ms. Havens.
As discussed at the workshop, this is the order to start the process of the upcoming election on May the sixth, and we have two places that are up for reelection. Any questions?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the order for the order of election. Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item rate is recommending topics for upcoming agenda items or announcements by board members. And we'll start with.
I do, oh, sorry.
This is an observation of the lunch meeting. That was an excellent process, by the way, and the gentleman that sat at the table with Ms. Colley and I were very appreciative as well as insightful. They, they answered our questions about what they do. I didn't understand most of it.
He didn't understand. I did.
One thing I wanted to ask was, April next year, I believe it's April twenty-third next year with the eclipse, is C T C involved in anything about that? Not the eclipse itself, but is he able to observe?
We're a long ways off from April next year, but yes.
Well, me, because K S, Colleen and Copper Scope were both having town halls and stuff. They're trying to organize.
We, we already had a meeting, we had one joint meeting in the Planetarium to talk about that with the city of Colleen and so forth, so, yes, sir, we are.
But we have a really good location for that.
Yep, exactly. You can buy the first seat.
Yeah. Oh, hey, okay. Come, come, come find me.
If it would be helpful to our program or whatever for enrollment, I understand that there's a four hundred thousand nurse shortage in the United States. Would it be helpful if we had some kind of discussion at the workshop about if we need to do something else, or can we do something else to attract prospective students?
We're not having a problem, Don, attracting prospective students. We have a waiting list. One of the things that Dr. Sam Marupa did was she reduced the length of that, of one of the programs to, somebody help me out here. Nine months, right, from the sixteen. So we have, and we have, we have two programs going on, which we, we saw that a couple of years ago, a few years ago, and I said, we need another, another program, not just one. So they've got programs in the day and evening, so we're doing all we can. Yes, sir. Part of the, part of the issue, when you get, when you get beyond what we can do, is the same thing with this pilot training. You know, you have to have places where these nurses can go and be trained in these hospitals, and they just don't have all of the, they don't have all the seats for us to get to go in to do clinicals necessarily. So we're, and we're, remember, we're shared with Temple College and others, so we're sending people as far away as Georgetown to get clinicals and Temple, and, you know, it, it becomes a little cumbersome when I have to call and ask permission to go into another service area of another college, you know, to serve them, so. But we're doing all we can, but I appreciate your question.
Okay, and in addition, is there another vocation that we could expand, such as a nurse?
Again, good question, and I know that the Dr. Adie and, and Dean Fisher are looking at possible expansion of that into, into other areas, you know, whether it's, and I can't think of the name of them, has to do with breathing and what? Respiratory therapists and so forth, so they're looking at those now.
I mentioned a couple of months ago, the Southern Career Institute, and they, you know, seem to be advertising and publicizing their programs. Is there anything that they're doing that we?
That, that brings a whole nother set of metrics in, which is accreditation and standards and the things that they, they do that they can do that we don't do, that we can't do because of maintaining our standards and our integrity of our programs. So I'm not sure where those students end up going. It's like when Vista closed down, you know, they just walked out and left those kids hanging, and most of them had paid big dollars to get what they could get here for very few dollars, you know? So I, I, I don't like to compare us to them exactly. I know that theirs is a big marketing play, and if you market enough and you get enough people, you know, but what, we're, we're looking for quality, and then we're held accountable. I mean, you don't want a nurse who didn't have the quality we have working on you in a hospital, and our nurses are held to that standard even after they graduate, and we're held. Our, our program that follows with the state nursing board, so if something happens, it's reported back to them, and then it's reported back, well, they went to school at Central Texas College. So we have these standards that have to be met and carried on forever. So, but I appreciate your question.
One last question. Cybersecurity, that, you know, as everyone knows, is running rampant across the United States. Do we need to do anything else there since we have our great military folks here that we could attract?
You missed lunch.
You would have experienced what we're doing for cybersecurity. Good job, folks.
Thank you.
Anything else? Announcement of the time and location of the board workshop scheduled for Tuesday, February the twenty-first, twenty twenty-three at one P M, and the board meeting scheduled for Tuesday, February the twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three at one P M in this facility. At this point, we'll call for an executive session. I'd like the board to retire to the conference room for a few minutes.
That's a good one.
That's a good one.
Okay, so that's good.
Okay, I can't believe it took me that long.
I'll make the motion.
We request the administration develop an RFP to find a legal firm to represent the board.
There's a second to that motion.
Second.
Motion was made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? All those who favor the motion say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. That being the end of our agenda for this meeting of the Central Texas College Board of Trustees, we stand adjourned.
Alright.
That's the Spanish.